Okay, so we'll call the Conway Grammar School Committee meeting to order at 6:06 PM today on Thursday, January 18th. First order of business would be approval of minutes. They're in here, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
There we go. Oh, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you for having my back. Keep me employed. The next order of business, should we move on to people that are here so they could present and move on with their evening, or?
Jill Barnes and Gail Farrick.
Thank you.
Fourth grade teacher, fourth grade IA, they're just here for the meeting.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, though, for that.
All right. Should we move on to financial statements?
Sure, I did email you your reports. You do have eight warrants to sign tonight, the total forty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. Going through the actual report, we do have some overages and some underages, and we're about eleven hundred, twenty-one dollars short right now, but I'm not concerned because there's always lines that we don't spend in, and once we get some heating season, there could be a couple dollars left there. So, as long as we're not totally, you don't see a lot going over in each of the total buckets, I think we're doing fine right now.
Okay. Be nice if there's some left over after this heating season.
What do you want?
We've used all our wood at my house.
(laughing).
Okay. Should we?
Page ninety-four.
Yeah, thank you. Do the first school's report.
Yep. So, my report is brief because I knew that we would be talking about the budget tonight, but we were, uh, we were lucky enough to have national expert Kathy Bosno, she's an expert in the area of teaching math, come into our second grade for a week last week, she was piloting a program, and she used our second grade to do it, so it was great, many of us were able to see her teaching and learn some things, and her team consisted of two other gentlemen from the Netherlands, and they've been working together for over thirty years. We actually used quite a bit of Kathy's material throughout the week, so that was great. We had a successful lock down drill on Tuesday. We're preparing for MCAS, which is coming up in March and April, hopefully getting it scheduled out for parents soon. I just wanted to let the committee know that Mary Delusa, who's our new food, our food service director, really is wonderful, she's very much about the kids, and she's been a real nice addition to our team. And she's doing many different things, but one of the things I just wanted to talk about was she does this favorite meal of the month, so each grade level votes on, they're giving, like, six choices, and they vote on their favorite meal, and then, in the menu, it goes down as fifth grade's choice, and the kids get excited about it. But she's been very collaborative, she's been working with Jeannie and with me, and she's, right now, we've been going over monthly numbers, and right now, we are in the positives, so that not for school lunch payments, we're much better than we were last year at this time, and I credit a lot of that to actually the Meals Plus system, the food rights system that we have. We're taking the NWEA this month, so next month, I'll have some data for you in terms of how our kiddos are doing in math and ELA. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about the pipes, I'm sorry I didn't include this on here, Lynn reminded me, so we had some big issues over the past couple weeks with the pipe in our preschool room frozen and then burst, and Bob, actually, were you here when, yeah, can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, they found after, the pipe evidently had frozen a week or two prior to the leak, and once it started unthawing, the weather warmed up a little bit, that's when it ruptured. Uh, it had, according to the janitor, they had problems before, and thought they'd fixed it, and they came and worked on it that day of the rupture, but it wasn't in the unit itself, it was in a pipe that was put in the outside wall at the time the building was constructed. And it goes right in the side of the wall, right in front of an outdoor air van, that faces due west where the wind blows in there ninety miles an hour.
It's hard to see that.
And that froze solid, I guess that went to pipe, and finally unthawed enough and it blew open. So, we got, we got the call because the fire alarm system went off, we come down in, the whole classroom was just a fog.
That was in the evening?
And there was antifreeze all over the floor, because they had put antifreeze in the pipes to prevent from freezing, and evidently this was, pipe probably was frozen prior to them putting the antifreeze in it, and they never realized that. So, the antifreeze didn't work itself into that section of the pipe because it was frozen, and they didn't know that. Didn't matter, like I said, they didn't even know that piece of pipe existed. So, after the rupture, they had to literally tear apart and from the, open the wall and from this, so our firemen isolated the system when we were here, just so if the thermostat's called for heat anymore, it wouldn't continue pumping it out into the classroom, so, and I understand they came and fixed it the next morning, I guess.
Yeah, we had to cancel preschool for three days because the first time, they had to take the whole unit out, and they had to repair it, so we had to cancel preschool for three days, and then we thought we were in good shape, and then I got a call that evening, that the pipe that you really couldn't even see, right?
No, they had no idea it was over there.
Right, right. So, I think we're up and running well.
So, I have a couple questions about that. So, the first is about how much of an unexpected repairs cost does that mean?
I just put a BOLO on my note, my financial report, to be on the lookout for JAMROG bills for the pipe. We won't have the bills yet. If this, if this just happened, we will not have the invoices yet.
Because I understand it was thousands, it was several thousand dollars worth of antifreeze alone?
Fifty gallons of antifreeze?
It pretty well dumped the system.
So...
What it did is it not only blew, only a portion that came into the classroom, the biggest amount of the antifreeze leak was outdoors, went out to the outside, matter of fact, the snow was melting six, eight feet around the building out there, and it was just solid red. Thank God it's non-toxic antifreeze.
Yeah, it's non-toxic.
So, I guess the next question is sort of, whose responsibility is it to know that such a pipe exists, and that when you hook up antifreeze to the thing, that because of this pipe, it's a booby trap waiting to happen?
Good question, though, but then Bruce and I have been talking a lot about that. I will say that JAMROG has been, responded to our, they're exceptional, I mean, if we need something, they're busy too, but they've been really great to us, but there lies the question, right Phil, do we, do we split?
Well, it's an insurance claim, wouldn't it?
Who pays for that, that antifreeze that's gone, you know?
Well, it's our deductible.
I'll call the town and check on that.
Is there any damage to classroom materials?
No, I will tell you, kudos to Bruce, he was here, you know, for as many hours as he needed to be, and got it all, he cleaned it up, and it's not toxic, so that was great.
But it's also a loss of revenue because business is closed, right?
Right.
So, where do you get?
Preschools are paid for.
Preschools have to close, yeah.
Well, we lost three days.
So, that's three days of tuition.
So, I guess rather than whose fault is it, I guess maybe the easier question for us to work on is sort of, how do you preserve institutional knowledge like this?
Yeah.
And, I mean, whose response, somebody did...
There's nobody here now, except for Bob, when this building was built, there's nobody here.
Good question.
It was not, it was documented anywhere that pipe was even there.
You know from the get-go, the building had a lot of design flaws from the get-go, you know, this is, the building's only thirty years old, and there's three roofs on it, and you know, so everything's suspect, you know that.
So, is it a pipe that, a drainage pipe, a water pipe, or?
A heating pipe.
Switch heating pipe.
Yeah, but it's true, the earmark couldn't have seen it, Bob didn't know it was, Bruce didn't know it was, yes, but that's a good question, Phil, like, how do we then move forward, make a, do we document where the pipe, right?
Because it's still not Bruce's position to know, it's not, I mean...
No, it's Bob Lesko's. He's in charge of facilities.
Nobody would ever known that was there, ever, never.
And did some, did something similar happen at Whaley Elementary, is what they said? No?
But the question is, in thirty years' time, it never got cold enough before?
They've had problems in that classroom before, but it's the piping, on the unit itself, where you could just slide the front covers off and see the problem right there. This is in the wall behind that problem area. Very poor design, because the cold air return is facing due west, right where the strongest winter winds blow in there, can blow right into the backside of that unit, terrible idea. They should have somehow moved it around to the side, maybe facing it where the school buses, or the parking lot maybe, or something like that. I told, I told the janitor, and I said, "You people ought to really seriously think about come wintertime, getting a piece of coated foam, styrofoam, fixed up, plug that whole area off right there, just to keep this one happening again." Granted, it's gonna, you're gonna interrupt your fresh air intake into the classroom, because that's the only way it's got to come in there, but it's gonna prevent a lot of freezing problems in the future too. I mean, it's just, just a poor design.
You could do something from the inside to allow some air from the hood to get into the spot.
Does it make sense that it hadn't happened before?
No, like, leave the kitchen cabinet open?
Yep, yep, yep.
And then, you could do that.
Now that the pipe's older, you know, I hear what you're saying, so in the first ten years of a pipe's life, it could take the ninety-year winds and the ninety per mile winds, but now that the pipe's older, does that weaken it?
Definitely.
That you think it happened now, and hasn't happened in the past twenty-eight?
It may have froze in the past, and they just never noticed it, but it never ruptured.
Right.
Till now. Like you said, maybe the pipe's have gotten weak in thirty years, and then it froze up again this time, and weakened the pipe enough to rupture. I mean, who will ever know?
But Jerry said it was like a sauna in there.
Oh, it was, it was. I mean, it's funny, the problem was, it wasn't the alarms in the classroom went off, it was in that bathroom in that classroom, they had the door open to the bathroom, and more steam congregated in that room, that's when it touched the alarm.
Oh.
I guess they never knew they had a problem with the fire alarm, because there was people in the building.
Yeah.
The other part-time janitor, Janet was calling, was in here working.
Yeah.
Just a thing you can't plan for, I guess, I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, and I just want to publicly commend Bruce because he's really been on topic since...
He was Johnny, he was, he was not available when we first called him, but he was on his way back from Greenville, soon as he got home, he came, as we were leaving, he was coming in.
He was very dedicated to the school, yeah.
Yeah, he was Johnny on the spot. I imagine he spent most of the night here.
Yeah, most of the weekend. So, that's never a boring moment.
(laughing). Well, I'm glad you were here to help us understand more about what happened.
Right, because he was here that night.
Yeah. It was a cold evening, too, it was really cold that night, it was down the borewell.
Well, I hear we got a warm-up trend coming.
I heard that, yeah. It may be good, it may be not so good, we got a more appropriate place.
(laughing). So, are we on to the superintendent's report?
Yeah.
Sure, thank you. My, my report won't, won't take long. I just wanted to talk about the special education strategic plan task force that we have going on. It was part of my original goals for the year, and it really wasn't fleshed out in the goals, as a lot of the goals weren't, but I really wanted to explain what it was about. This is a document that was actually written by Karen Ferrandino and Sharon Jones, our curriculum facilitator from the collaborative, who's helping to facilitate these meetings. And what these meetings are doing is what, it's a district-wide, it's, it's actually five-school-wide, all the schools, educators from each of the schools are coming together, sometimes during early release times, sometimes just after, you know, after school, or having an afternoon of work, and they've met four times as a whole group, but they've met many more times in focus groups. And the focus groups are, there's three. One is, it's called RTIMTS, and that's multi-tiered systems of support. So, that's a focus group that is focusing on working with, we're talking about including the students in the classroom, all of them, and not just having a student sitting there with an adult, an IA, or, but actually including them in all the activities, and how we reach all the needs of the students through a system of supports that are tiered to the needs of the student, personalized learning. And then, vertical alignment of inclusion services, and that vertical alignment is when they, when they go from pre-K into kindergarten, going up through, and the biggest, of course, transition going from here, sixth grade, over to frontier and seventh grade, they want to continue the same system of supports. And then, the last one being parent engagement, which is always a big thing when you're talking about, particularly special education services. So, what they're doing is, they have sixteen educators across five schools, and they're hoping to have a strategic plan for special ed, which is part of our overall district's strategic plan. We have curriculum assessment, and then special ed, and that's the strategic plan that was presented in October, and they're hoping to have this plan that is part of our, it's, it's a subcategory of the district strategic plan, they're hoping to have that ready in June, and they've been working really hard on it, and what they, their goal is, again, to close a divide, shifting our mindsets and educational practices to embrace the notion that we're all one system of support. So, we don't really want to take and differentiate, look at that child's in special ed, so that child needs this specific person, or these specific methods of teaching, we want to bring them all together for one system of support that would just, that would just serve all the needs of the students. So, this explains it, and we're excited about it, and we'll be coming back with the strategic plan that they do develop. Thank you.
Do we have a collaborative report?
We do have it.
Okay. And I don't have anything. So, are we on to budget talks, or do we want to do public comment, or do we want to do public comment after budget talks? Public just here to listen to the budget?
We're just here to listen.
Okay, all right. On with the budget.
There are a couple more copies of the budget here, if anyone would like one. So, good evening, this is our first glance at our FY19 budget. It is not complete in that our narratives aren't in there yet, but if we start at page one of twenty-three, this is the page that we started last year, the student and staff data sheet, and on the left, we're looking at who we had in the building on October first, because that is what our foundation budget would be based on. So, we had a hundred and thirty-eight students in the building on October first, with twenty-six of them being on IEPs. So, then I just take that and I project it forward, kindergarten becomes first grade, so we're looking right now that we would have a hundred and twenty-three children, but that's a little bit misleading, because kindergarten, that's seven, is only the pre-Ks that we know are coming up to kindergarten. We have not had kindergarten registration yet, or, when will that be, Mrs. Gordon?
It's going on right now.
It's going on right now, so as you, as you get numbers, would you please let me know so that I can update this.
Can you make any predictions on that?
Yeah.
No, I, um, I, no, I'm pretty certain of six, but I haven't gotten the census yet, Kim McCarthy, our early childhood coordinator, usually gets that, but as I get numbers, I can keep updating the school.
And on the right-hand side is our staff members, how many FTEs, or what we call full-time equivalents, and as you can see, since last year's budget, two positions have been added, both were instructional assistants, and one was a tuitioned-in student into our Wings program, and another was a pre-K student that required some more assistance than we had anticipated. And on the bottom, you'll see our teaching credentials, so this is how many, this is what our contract scale looks like, so we have three teachers with bachelor's degrees, we have no teachers with bachelor's plus fifteen, we have nine with masters, we have three with masters fifteen, two with masters plus thirty, and six teachers with masters forty-five or CAGs, which that is a, that's probably the largest number of any school that we have that many teachers that are that well-educated, which means that we've got some very dedicated teachers here that are very vested in getting the most recent teaching practices, so we should be very proud of that. Page two of twenty-three, this is our summary of changes, where we go from where we were this year, FY18, the Conway School budget, one million, eight forty-four, seven hundred, that, I want to make clear, was the amount the town appropriated for us. To that, we need to add two point, our collective bargaining agreement at two and a half percent costs us twenty-seven thousand, four forty-six. We have teachers NIAs that still are stepping on the contract, and that was ten thousand, two fifty-nine. We had two degree changes that cost two thousand, nine seventy-eight. We're putting money for non-union increase, five thousand, six sixty-eight. There was a decrease due to new hire savings of about seven thousand, one sixty-five, and we have an increase for a retirement buyback of sixteen thousand, one ninety-five. That is a one-time cost of a teacher that retired, that will not be recurring next year unless someone else does retire. The central office expenses increased forty-three, twenty-three. Transportation, I'm expecting it to go above, to increase about two thousand, it's based on a consumer price index, and the December numbers haven't been released, and I sort of projected based on what September, October, November, we're all at two point six, so I held December at two point six, and came up with a percent increase of a one point eight three, which would mean a two thousand dollar increase for Conway. Our sped transportation's going to increase about thirty-six hundred dollars, and our, the only decrease we have is our technology costs are going down about four thousand, three hundred and eighty, for a total change of sixty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, for a total request to the town of one million, nine oh five, six twenty-four, which is a three point three percent increase. The next few pages, pages three.
Just a straightforward question right there, Patty.
Sure.
How confident are you of those numbers, like, changing, or, or staying the same?
Well...
Like, are there any state funding decisions that could impact any of those big numbers?
Well, we have not seen, we have seen nothing from the governor. The transportation number could change, the increase, the health insurance number could change, your share of the central office health insurance could change, because when we did the calculations, we didn't have the exact percentage, and now we do, that was voted last Wednesday, so I have to go back and, and see how close my calculations are. So, we can have some wiggle room here of a change here or there, but I would think overall, I would say I'm eighty-nine percent confident that we're in the ballpark.
Eighty-nine percent?
Eighty-nine.
Unusual degree of numerical specificity.
Well, that's how I am. You ask a question, I'm gonna give you an answer. So, pages three through eleven are the detail of the, of the numbers that we just looked at on page two, and you can look at that at your leisure. Starting on page twelve, this is all our funds. So, our, the first column here is the FY19 proposed budget that we looked at, and then the second column would be our use of school choice funds, our use of early childhood revolving funds, our use of sped revolving funds, and the allocation of the ninety-four, one forty-two grant that we get. And if you look at page fourteen, you can see mostly we're staffing, we're using that money for staff, school choice, we're putting most of our instructional assistance there, the early childhood is, offsets a piece of our pre-K teacher's salary, the sped revolving pays for the teachers, a little bit of speech, they also have an allowance for substitute teachers, their IAs and their program. They also, on the next page, use some money for professional development, because they need to be trained in restraint training, they use about twenty-five hundred dollars in instructional materials and supplies, they use about fifteen hundred dollars for field trips, and if you, that is, so if you go to the end of page twenty of twenty-three, you can see that of the total budget of two million, three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty thousand, three dollars, which is a hundred percent, we're asking for the town to fund eighty percent of that budget. The other thing I do like about this sheet is that it tells a more complete story about how we're spending our money. So, if you look just at, if you're looking at just what we asked the town for, you would think that we're paying our teachers six hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars, when actuality, our total teaching cost for classroom teachers is seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred dollars. So, this gives us a better view of what we're actually spending in the building. Page twenty-one is school choice, I can take the circuit breaker out of there, because we never get any of that money. So, last year was the first year, or, I should say this year, because we're still in this year, we always spent the money a year in arrears, but we were at the point where we needed to spend not just the prior year, but a little bit of this year's. And our projected revenue was actually lower, came in lower than what we had anticipated. So, we're, we will be starting the year at a negative fifty thousand, four seventy-two, but cash-wise, the money is there, it's not a negative. The FY17 revenue that we know we're getting is two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five, and we're gonna be using a hundred and eighty thousand, nine eighty-one, so we'll be seventeen thousand, eight twenty-eight of nineteen's revenue. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the next page is our sped revolving, and this is the Wings program. So, again, we had, we started a little lower than we thought we were going to with our beginning balance, but our revenue has shot up, and our expense has stayed pretty close, the difference is one of the IAs that we talked about on page one. So, we're projecting the ending balance to be ninety-seven thousand, eight oh eight. Our tuition is going to be significantly lowered next year, right now, because we have three students that are matriculating, because they are sixth graders. We will, of course, be hoping that we will get some spots filled, but I like to be conservative in my revenue projections. So, with that said, we would be losing an instructional aid from this program, and we would have about fifteen thousand, three eighty-eight left. Now, even though we're eliminating the IA from the Wings program, we did, that is what causes the school choice, because we need to keep that IA on staff with us, because one of our school choice students came with some needs that we were unaware of, and to keep him or her, we're gonna need that IA's help in the fifth and sixth grade next year. So, we are just going to move the funding from the Wings program into the school choice program.
Doesn't that get paid by the district sending the kid?
It will, and that's why I put it on the school choice lane, excellent question, because we'll get that money back, we will bill that, because we will get... We will bill that because we will get the sped increment. Uh, when you have a child, uh, accepted in the school choice program and they become, um, special ed needs, their transportation costs, uh, their, the cost of an IA, uh, there's a grid that you put their numbers through, and then we bill for that. So that's why I'm saying we're gonna be upside down, but we'll probably, that number doesn't include the sped increment we're gonna ask for in June.
Usually a year delayed, right?
Yes.
How many students did we have come into Wings from out of district this year? Just out of curiosity.
I have that. Just let me dig it out. Six. Seven. Wait, hang on, let me see, let me see who's listed here because we just brought two in. One, five, six, seven. So there was seven and one, two, three, and four Conway students. Seven out of district and four Conway.
I remember last year, we, at this time, we were talking about, we were losing a lot. And it was like, just, the program's never not taken referrals. This is just further justification. It's, it's a very good program. Districts like sending children here and its revenue. So.
And, and Dr. Carey and Mrs. Gordon and myself had a conversation with Ms. Ferrandino, our sped director today, and she feels confident that she's gonna get at least two placements. But, um, from a financial standpoint, I don't like to put that pressure.
Right.
On her.
But it's, it just happens every year.
Right, that the kids come. We find that, we find the students take the slots. You're correct.
So there's, I, I was just curious, the, on 20 of 23, the total, the, the number of, the percentage of the total budget that's paid for by the state and federal governments.
Well, that's a different story.
That doesn't reflect that on 20 of 23 in the first column, FY '19 proposed at the bottom?
On 20 of 23, um, column one, that, that's what we asked the town for.
Right.
But that's not what the town will get in chapter 70 funding. That, that hasn't been, um, that's not, hasn't been released. The governor's budget hasn't been released. So I don't know. The town would get chapter 70 funding to support that $1,905, but I don't know what that number is at this moment. We won't know until the governor's budget comes out.
You know what, last year's?
I don't off the top of my head, Mr. Baker, I'm sorry.
Last year, the percentage was 21%. I know that. And it's been, 1976, it was 41%. And it's been in a straight line going down, the percentage of our total education expense paid for by the state and federal government. And it's a straight line.
And, but with that said, they've also had a provision called the Hold Harmless. So we haven't decreased either. So they, they, the whole, hell, the Hold Harmless is what's kept, kept us even. So I think we need to also be thankful that they haven't. I agree, more money should be put towards education, but I'm just saying they, they have a Hold Harmless provision, so we haven't been as significantly hurt as we could have been.
So questions about, are you done with your presentation?
I am. Questions?
I have a question. The ESSA becomes, it goes into effect this coming August.
The what does?
ESSA. Massachusetts has an ESSA plan that was, this back, October was approved by the U.S. Department of Education, which is replaces NLCV, NCLV with it. So, uh, has there, has there any, any thought about how that could potentially shift the allocation of funds within this budget?
Well, this year, we lost our Title I funding here at Conway. This is the first year, we did not qualify for any. So of the five schools in our Frontier and the Union, uh, there are now two schools who don't qualify for Title I, which was what, is what ESSA is. And that is Conway and Whately. Uh, and, and, and Whately hasn't had Title I money since I've been here, so that's almost six years.
Why did we lose it?
Because we don't, because they, because of the free and reduced population, we, we just don't have enough free and reduced, um, population. So I don't see that, I don't, I don't see that, ESSA, if I'm, if I, I think I'm right, ESSA is Title, what, the re, the re-Title, we call it Title I for funding, but it's, there, that's the new name for it.
ESSA is, um, the regulations and, um, no child left behind, brought in all the assessments, and now we're having ESSA. And it's really more, um, academic with a bent to that. For instance, we're a Level One school in Conway, which is excellent. But the levels in Massachusetts are going away. They're going to find a different, other ways and other means to, um, assess the success of the school.
Including A-school, then.
Yes, right. They, they, they'll have other ways of, of, of rating us, if they're going to rate us. And the assessments are, uh, different. They're, um, they're not going to be, uh, now we're in MCAS II, and the way they're rating those are different. They, they're finding a, a different, uh, kind of a midpoint in how they're judging that. It, it has a lot to do with accountability and assessment and.
Yeah, it's test, it's score-centric too, right?
Yes, there.
So that's why I was, maybe you have to spend more money on, on purchasing your testing materials or things of that nature. Is that possible?
No. We use two types of testing right now, uh, the NWEA and what's the other one that we use?
AIMS Web.
AIMS Web. And, but we've used them right along.
MCAS is free, though. They're requiring us to do it, so they, and it's, now it's online. So now they, they do it on computers. And the technology has been very well-supported by Conway, um, by the school committee and the taxpayers, so that there's enough computers to go around so the students can take the tests online. But we have district-determined measures within this school, and those are, it's called, um, Measures of Academic Progress, which is Northwest Educational Association, NWEA. And so that's how, inside the school, the teachers, uh, they can use those scores. For instance, next month, Kristen's gonna come back with scores. They're going to determine, um, are the children making growth? Where are the weaknesses? How do we personalize the learning? And where do we get those multi-tiered systems of support? Those tests are done within. And a lot of the ESSA is really about that kind of, um, that kind of, uh, assessment and teaching Common Core. Are they still gonna, are they gonna stay with Common Core? Are they gonna use a different way of teaching? So it's a lot of the requirements for the academic piece. Title I is an entitlement grant, uh, as, as well as Title II, and, and Title II is a professional development grant. Then we have REAC, which is Rule, uh, you know, the Rule, uh, Grants that we get, REAC. So those are entitlement grants. The problem is, is that's to help equalize, say, uh, socio-economic, you know, districts that are lower than some others to make them equalized. And unfortunately, Conway, although you get Title II-A, you do get Title II-A for professional development, but you don't get Title I, which would be money to help, help students that are socially, socio-economically disadvantaged.
What a great question, though, because a lot of these, um, come with unfunded mandates, right? They say, so that's a great forward-looking question.
A quick follow-up. The Special Education Task Force, when do you expect to complete and release your initial senior recommendations of study?
Well, they're hoping to have the plan, the strategic plan, um, submitted to me by June. And, uh, but they're working hard at it. I, I attended a meeting this, um, this very week about, uh, the multi-tiered systems of support. And they're really working hard on it. They're dedicated, they've, they've got a vision statement, they've got a plan, and it is, and, and the goal is someday to be able to, as we encompass all students, that maybe we won't, you know, need as much instruction to, you know, grow. But right now, they're, they're really working hard on helping us identify, how can we meet the needs of all students? Not only struggling students, but students that need enrichment. And it's one system from enrichment all the way down to the students that need that support to keep up. So we're hoping by June.
Any other questions?
I have one that's not, it's not to do with the budget, but.
That's even better.
I, it's to do with last year's budget. It's last year, the town at Conway appropriated, I think it was $34,000 to upgrade our phone and intercom systems.
Yes.
And I understand as of today, it has not been completed yet. Do you know what the status of that is?
So we.
Did I actually put you up to this?
We, we started a, a new system, using a new system when the central office moved into, um, the high school. And it's, it's using VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol, rather than our hard lines. And there were some issues that needed to be worked out. Um, and so our Director of Technology, Scott Paul, um, was trying to work out those kinks because Whately also had funded money. So Whately, um, we're the guinea pigs, and the second system is Whately. And then I don't know the schedule for the second and third, but I know Conway's in there and Deerfield. Everybody put money in. So we're, we, we don't wanna, we're trying to do this very methodic, slowly and methodically, and we're doing it ourselves. We're, we're not going out and getting a vendor. Scott is piecing these things together by himself, um, so that we can get the best price. So Whately is being done first. We're gonna see how that works, and then we're gonna move on to the next school.
So are you talking about the intercom?
Video, webcam, flash phone.
So the intercom is, the parts are ordered, the PO is written for the work, uh, the call again yesterday. The parts, I believe, have actually been delivered to the vendor that's coming to fix the intercom. And I'm telling you, I'm, it's gotta start next week. Hands down, it's gotta start. And, and they are actually the first one in the, in the district to get the, the intercom. But the intercom, the reason it took us a long time to get the vendors here to scope out, we had two or three vendors so that we could get some, you know, bids. But the phone system has to, you know, to, it has to combine in, in, uh, multifunction with the intercom system. Now, we had, actually, Kristen had someone in here in the summer, and they paid a couple thousand or something to fix the intercom. So at that point, we thought, well, the intercom's good for a while, but that fix didn't, didn't work. So we've had a couple of vendors come and look, but they had to meet, not only with Bob Lesko, but they had to meet with Scott Paul because of the technology piece with the phones. They just have to, um, they have to combine, coordinate.
So we're not changing the phone system here, we're just fixing the intercom?
I think we're upgrading.
Which is different, which is different than Whately because we're changing the phone system there.
I think they're fixed so that the phones, they can call one another. The phones aren't working.
I understand neither one will work at this point.
So anyway.
Because I think that was, I heard the, overheard conversation after the lockdown. There's like a communication between the front office and anywhere up, up, up this red light.
Wasn't like, it was because they had a yell. And so when you got to this corner, you know, when you, when you stopped at, um.
There's a bend in the school.
Yeah.
You must make it around the corner.
They didn't hear, they didn't hear the yell. So it wasn't for teachers, like, you know, like, lack of community, staff lack of communication, because you just couldn't hear. And if someone had their door shut, they really couldn't hear someone yelling.
Well, if there's a person of, uh.
Yes.
That's caused this lockdown that happened to be out in the corridor.
Right.
That would be disastrous.
We call that an evil door. There was an evil door in the school, and it is a problem, and the safety is at risk. So what, the PO was written in December. Just so you know, that means that we ordered the work in December. We finally got the bid, they pinned down whatever wires and cords and systems and, you know, um, combination thing that they need to do with the server, with the technology person and Bob Lesko. That was, then we waited for them to order the, the parts. The parts, as far as I know, are in. And again, I'm going to try again to contact, I, I believe it's gonna start this week. We were promised, it'll take three days to do, the work will be done by January 31st.
Right.
And that's what we were told a month ago, and we were just hoping it would come sooner.
A lot of projects that get delayed down the road for one reason or the other.
Right.
But this one is more important even than Whately. Whately will come after this one, and then we're off to Deerfield. But this school is the one, this is the one where the, the intercom is just not working. The intercom system is not working at all. And the other schools, they can get by, but this is the school that's been important. And we've really have been working on it, but it was coordinating to get the different bids in and getting Scott and Bob and, you know, the vendors and, but there's no excuse. And I, I, I accept that. There's no excuse, the safety of the students.
You're only relying on what the vendors are telling you. You gotta rely on them, you know?
We'll hope for January 31st.
I think this is a relatively new phone system. I think it was put in like a year or two before I got here, the phone system.
I remember redoing the phone system.
The phones are new, the intercom is not.
Right. So they put in a new phone system, but they didn't replace the intercom at the same time.
So if the phone, but the intercom needs to work in conjunction.
Right.
With, so it's, um.
Glad you hear that it still works.
We'll get there.
You're good. It's been and works for, but it's frustrating, and it's, it's very frustrating. And not for, um, Kristen putting it on the back burner, because Kristen has not put it on the back burner.
Luckily, she got a loud voice, she can yell down the hallway.
She sends emails all the time.
Come on, this is important. And then, and then we had the, um, some support from the teachers in the union that this is important, it's on everyone's mind. And it's just, there's no excuse.
So if I could just piggyback just on what, so that thirty, the, the intercom was part of last year's town meeting capital request.
That we asked to take out of our fund.
Out of the capital, special ca, so there's been a capital request now for years in a row.
So this is the first of what time we've requested to take money out. Every year, we request with $50,000 in. This is the first time we've requested to take money out.
So will there be another request this year?
We've been requesting $50,000 every year.
Yes, there is gonna be one. To be, well, and the lining of the water tank.
And Tom's taking care of that.
Last night, he talked about that.
Right.
Tom's taking care of that. So they're gonna line the well, and they're gonna give you.
Something new that DMP is requiring at the school.
Public water supply.
So that's gonna take, that's gonna take precedent over anything else that needs to be done.
Did you see that water tank? Like, there's no getting that out. It's in cement. It's literally getting cement.
I don't know how they ever line that thing.
You can't get it out. You can't even get, barely get in there. It's the craziest thing. Cement is all around it.
Before they put the floor on, they put the tank in, and then they build up from there.
Yeah, it's crazy.
So any more questions about the budget?
The audit, the audit, uh, I think two years ago, we had an audit by Rossellian Clark. Do they do for an audit for this coming fiscal year 19, Patty?
It shouldn't, it, when I, when I came aboard, um, not all the towns got audited every year.
Seven other years.
So, um, I did speak with, um, the head of the finance, and he says, as long as each school does one every three years, um, the smaller towns, as long as they do an audit on the end-of-the-year report every three years, he would be fine with that. So, um, I think, I, I think we've got one more year before we hit the third year again.
Two questions. One is, it looks like on page 17, food services is $24,000.
So food ser, uh, the food service is a revolving fund, and it should, um, it should be a self-sustaining fund, but that has been a systemic problem.
That's theoretical.
It's a systemic problem, but we've all been losing money in all five schools. So what we had proposed this year was to share a food service director. So we're bringing that piece onto the budget so that we keep it out of the fund, so hopefully we can have a positive cash flow in the fund. So that's why you're only seeing, um, Conway's share of the district food service director.
So what is our total cost to feed our students? Do they pay for their meals?
Yes. Some do, some don't.
What's our, how is our question, uh, what's the percentage of our, getting our money back out of the parents?
Better than last year.
Probably better than some of the schools, but probably not 100%, is it?
It's not 100%, but I, I'll tell you, Kristen, um, has done a great job sending out letters. I've, I've spoken to parents. I, I tell Kristen, when it gets to a point where you feel like you can't get anywhere, let me call. Um, and I don't find that these parents are unwilling to pay. They, it's not, they're, they're not intentionally trying not to pay. It's they're having difficulty paying. They've had, you know, financial situations which are preventing them. Um, and so at that case, I tried to tell them to stay current and then maybe give us $10 on, on the back, on the backend. Um, but since three years ago, the law changed. But since three years ago, the law changed, and the food service cannot be in the deficit, or it would affect the town's free cash. So if we're short, if we lose money, if the program has a loss, and whatever the balance is owed by parents at the end of the year, it's been coming out of the general fund budget and putting, been put into the food service program. So we're hoping that with this turnaround plan that we've been using, that we will at least be at a break-even point. And if not, then I'm gonna suggest our twenty budget, our fiscal year twenty budget, include a provision for bad debt or loss, so that it's budgeted, and we're not looking to spend it at the end of the year.
How much did it, how much did it say, more than five thousand dollars?
I don't, I didn't bring the figures.
I think it's been around, I think it was like two, what, two or three, twenty-five hundred last year or something?
I think we got it down to seventeen.
And that's what the school is indebted to the food service for?
It's just in the budget. It's what we haven't collected.
Right.
Are we any closer to getting the Meals Plus program up and running, so that parents can pay online?
It is, and that's why Kristen thinks we're doing, well, okay, so the online...
I don't pay my bill until I get a bill. Because I have no idea what's going on half the time.
The online piece is taking a little bit longer, and Dr. Carey and I have to meet with the four town administrators, because it's four separate bank accounts. Because each town is its own financial institution, so I need permission from four different treasurers to take online payments.
Will they go through that UNA whatever?
Whatever, that, we'd have to, because that's what I'm saying, each school would have to go through whatever, what, whatever, if, I do believe Conway uses Unibank.
Yeah.
So we would have to go, we'd talk to Tom, to talk to Jam Warner, to see if we are, can be allowed to take online payments. So we haven't gotten to that point. I'm hoping February or March, Dr. Carey and I can put that on our agenda to talk to the town administrators about that.
You're going to meet them about budgets, put that in the conversation, right?
Well, that would, that would be cost, that's more of a cost to the parent, and that's one of the drawbacks. In one of the districts that I was in previously, we implemented it, and the parents didn't use it because they didn't want to pay the fee.
Right. It's like twenty-five cents or something.
And it's a little higher than that on this one. And, well, that's the other thing, so, if, so if we use the one that comes with the program, there can only be one bank account, and I don't think we're gonna get the four towns to agree to that. So then, so then, what happens is, we'll be able to do, take online payments in each town, but then we lose the functionality of Ashley being able to go on to see that her child ate, you know, the mac and cheese with the chicken nuggets, or what they actually ate. We'll lose that, that will, we'll lose that capabilities.
I don't want to eat it, I just want to be able to pay you.
So it's...
Let's make it, you know what I mean?
Six to one, half the way.
I really don't, yeah. I'm like, oh yeah, I owe somebody, let's send it in. But, and there's also been a discrepancy on, if I pack one lunch, I pack two. You know what I mean, like?
Yeah.
And there's a huge discrepancy, and it's not, it can't just be a milk.
But Ashley, that happens, this is what, when I talk to these parents, this is what I hear. I send my child with a lunch, but our policy is to feed him, so if he gets in the line, whether you sent him with a lunch or not, we don't know that, we feed him.
You can't refuse not to feed him.
This void is Friday morning breakfast or whatever.
So he's very...
I'm not keeping track, it doesn't matter.
They're tossing the lunch, they're eating it.
I don't pay it, so like, I don't...
If he's an entrepreneur, still, he sold it to somebody else.
But that's what I hear, when I call these parents and say, oh, this money, they say, but I send my kid with the lunch. Well, they're not eating it, and they're getting in line, or they're eating it on the bus for breakfast, and they're getting in line.
You can't refuse them.
We can't, that's your policy for us not to refuse the kids to get in line.
Your kids aren't doing that.
That is our policy, you are correct. Feed them if they show up in line, absolutely. And the only thing is, I mean, what do we, put a guard at the front door? Did you bring your lunch, or you eat that lunch?
No, no, I just want to be able to go online, see my kids ate lunch, and pay my bill.
This school's small enough that we know if, I mean, Gail, you're in there, you know what their kids brought, and they're not really buying too much. Sometimes Ash, too, because, yeah, we need to take a look at it, because your discrepancy's real high. But sometimes a parent will send in money with one child, and maybe it only gets credited to that one child, while the other one keeps adding up. So we need to take a look.
And then we gotta look at the siblings, because, I mean, how many, did I make you ask you when I was trying to reconcile, I'd be calling, saying, is, you know, is Kevin Campbell related to Anita Campbell? Because Kevin's got too much money, and Anita has none. Yes, they're siblings, it's fine, and I'm transferring the funds.
Right, Patty did all that, yeah.
Clayton comes from my house half the week, and Christina's house half the week, and, you know, I, he usually makes a lunch, but I don't know if he does there or not. So who knows? But to me, then you just split the bill.
Right.
You know, because who can keep track?
So to answer your question, last year, we paid for two years, and the two years, bad debt and loss, was eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars.
Kids eat a lot in Conway.
How much was it?
Eighteen thousand, three sixteen, but that was two years.
But that wasn't, that wasn't kids not paying for lunch?
That was both kids not paying for lunch, or parents not paying for lunch, kids, it was parents not paying for lunch, and how much the program lost.
Right.
That was the bigger part.
We just raised the lunch cost last year, because we were below the federal...
Reimbursement, the FDA school lunch reimbursement.
And we're not allowed to be.
But that's part of the whole thing, because when they set up the school lunch program in the seventies, if they would have kept track, just with inflation, the reimbursement would now be over six dollars per school lunch. But that's another thing, that the percentage of reimbursement is going, and so the costs haven't gone down. And so the basic, at some point, you reach like a basic ethical, like, it's just unethical to actually expect the program to break even. And we're not quite there yet, but that's where it's headed, where we, you can't, you can't provide health, you...
You can't feed kids and...
As the percentage of reimbursement every year keeps going, and the percentage of cost keeps going this way, at some point soon, it's gonna be, like, we just can't, like, healthy, offer healthy meals and...
And we may have to, I just made a note to talk to Mary, to see if we've gotten the notification of what they will be reimbursing us for a free meal. If, we might have to raise our prices for FY nineteen again, if not nineteen, definitely for twenty. Because we can't charge less than they give us.
But Bob, several, you know, I, there are a couple people that are in this position where, I mean, some families, if someone takes on, literally, a family that took on five extra hours of work, and they voted them off the free lunch, you know?
So they should have not...
And then that bill gets real hard, because you're only, you know, let's say you're working for fifteen dollars an hour, it's only an extra seventy, it's, they, yeah, it's, it's, it's the one thing we could give to the kids, you know?
Well, just so you know, I have grandchildren at this school, I have grandchildren at Frontier Regional, and all sets of the grandchildren bring their back good reports about the lunch program, and Frontier is much better than it used to be.
Thank you for talking, thank you for saying, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
This is part of my grandchildren.
Can I just ask one more question?
What is other instructional hardware, and what is the twenty thousand in other expenses? What page do you want? Uh, sorry, sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yeah.
So we have to have a chart of accounts that aligns with Desi, and Desi's redoing all their hardware accounts, so we are too. So last year, they were budgeted, so other instructional hardware, that's gonna be the one-to-one devices?
Computers.
So for, so the kids take the test, and that compared to, what was the other question?
Just in, in other instructional hardware, it just says other expenses, so I was wondering with that twenty thousand.
Well, see, and that, I always put it, because I, it's, all right, it's definitely not a, well, it could be a contract service if we lease it. I don't know if Desi wants to consider a supplier or material, so I throw in other expenses until they will clarify for me where they want it.
But you're saying that twenty thousand is in computers?
Computers, smart boards, anything with technology.
And is that, so is that something we, are we buying or renting? You're saying rent?
So what, our technology director is Scott Paul, and he's been here for five years now, and what he did is, he went through and did an extensive inventory of all the, all five schools for hardware, and then he did the same thing for software. And what he's saying is, he has a certain number of investment that Conway has invested in their technology, and he divides that by five, and saying, we need to replace one fifth every year. So that's what that twenty thousand, it represents one-fifth of the investment of technology, because that, with changes and with things breaking, and then we make, and then we have to make those. Do we want to lease a Chromebook? Does it make it more sense for us to lease it or buy it? And with the Chromebooks, it's been more, it's been more advantageous for us to buy them. But if teachers need new laptops, it's been more advantageous for us to lease those.
So that's just a standing, you expect to see that over every budget year?
Yes.
Just as a maintenance cost?
Correct.
Thank you. It's a good question.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
On page twenty-three, the enrollment for Conway, we get one forty-two, and on page one, October first enrollment, we got one thirty-eight.
We picked up my page.
We both said October first, I just wondered, which one is...
I don't think we can count prepaid students in October enrollment.
No, they're both one thirty-eight, they're at one thirty-eight, one thirty-eight.
I saw one that said one forty-one.
So I'm under Union two thousand eighteen, it says Conway, one thirty-eight, and that ties out to my page one, which is one thirty-eight.
There was someone else I saw, so where you, I saw...
Twenty-seventeen says one forty-two, twenty-eighteen says one thirty-eight.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, twenty, twenty, it's projected, right. My real question is, how many kids, whether it's one thirty-eight or one forty-two, how many kids are from town?
Do we have, do we have the enrollment, you have the school choice right there?
Okay, so, school choice, thirty-five students are school choice, thirty-five.
And they're doing K to six?
Yes.
Not preschool?
You can't do, you can't do it for preschool.
Right, that's what you're saying, so K to six.
There's thirty-five school choice students.
About a hundred and three to a hundred and seven kids from town.
Yep.
You don't.
That's where I saw one forty-two.
More questions?
The point of bargaining, when does that start, when you, you know, for the next contract?
Dr. Carey, do you know, he's asking if the union has given us notification that they want to start negotiating yet on the next contract, if they...
Not yet, no.
This is for year twenty, is the...
Right, this is the, nineteen is the last year that we have a contract.
Stay tuned, thank you.
Yep.
So there's another year.
But we, usually, they send us the notification of when they want to start to bargain, and we haven't received that yet.
Still waiting.
We'll be here soon as we know. Any other questions? So we digest this, and we discuss it again next meeting, is that correct? So in February, we're hoping, what we're gonna be doing, we've been trying to, you know, trying to expand the budget every year since I've been here, and with Dr. Carey coming, last year, we added her staff and data page, which I really love. This year, Dr. Carey wants to do some, do a PowerPoint, so, and add more narratives, have a narrative, not just my narrative of how the money changed, but a narrative from the principals about what's happening in their school buildings. And she would like to expand her...
I just feel very happy.
Yes, and she'd like to expand hers. So in February, we're hoping that we'll have more detail of verbal, verbal and both picture in our PowerPoint presentation, which we would then use that PowerPoint presentation when the town calls us to present to them.
Awesome. I am gonna offer up a correction on your first introductory sentence, though, because I believe you are not looking to expand the budget every year, you're looking to expand your budget reporting and transparency.
Transparency, yes, sir.
I heard that, too. But the budget does expand every year, just out of...
The overall goal, though, is to, to make it clear from so many different angles, that the questions continue to come, and that people really understand what, what is making it tick, what's making the changes every year. Last year, we asked for fifty thousand more. This year, preliminary, before the deliberations, we're asking for sixty thousand more. But the idea is to give as much information, so that that triggers more questions, and then helps us explain even more.
I think when I was first on school committee in, it was like nineteen ninety-eight, I think, my first round, and the budget was done in a much more, like, let's put some money here, put some money there, and there was like really no transparency, we'll have a contingency fund here, and, and it was just bad. I mean, it, it made sense, the way budgets were done then, in terms of, you know, there was a little rainy day fund stuck around here, but there was no transparency at all.
You know, and that's interesting, nineteen ninety-eight is the year that I came into schools, and that is when, it was like right at the beginning of Ed reform, and Desi was giving money out hand over fist to all the schools. So they were just doing their budgets, if Desi gave them ten percent more, they would just take their budget and say, okay, you got ten percent more. And, and then, I think it was nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, when the rubber hit the road, and the fund stopped flowing, as Phil was saying, and then those big ten percent increases became to, began to flatline.
Yep.
Isn't it true that, really, there's no city or town that's at the level of funding, state funding, purchasing power since oh-three? I think that's correct.
I wouldn't know that statistic.
Not at that level of funding.
Well, I like, I really like understanding what every line is, and that you can ask questions and get answers about what, so people understand that this isn't about, you know, us, you know, putting money here or there, or whatever, it's really about creating the best school for our kids to, you know, get the best education that they can. So, really appreciate that.
I'm also, I'm also not afraid to say, I don't know, I gotta go check on that for you.
Right.
But it's also about having the dialogue between finance committee, select board, and this is the place to do it, and a town meeting floor is a really difficult place to have a dialogue.
Correct.
So, you know, study the stuff, bring up your questions, it's the administrator's burden to, you know, justify tax dollars.
Well, and people should be incredibly proud of the school. I mean, they have funded the school appropriately, our kids do get a great education here, no matter what type of learner they are, I can speak to that from both my kids, very different learners who have thrived here, you know, and, you know, we do well by every kid, I think, you know, so, you know, it shows. But we need to represent that, too, and not just, you know, get caught up sometimes in little details.
Do you guys have thoughts about long-term planning with, like, the, like, younger population with children kind of declining in general in this area, and how that will reflect future ability to keep being a great school?
I think Lynn's been very active in the superintendent's discussions about regionalization and getting together and all that, right?
Well, let me tell you that the state would love to see school unions like ours regionalize. The problem is, that's a change, and in my short tenure here, I've learned, you have, you just have to go slow or go fast. That people are not, they're, it's not that they're not willing, but it, there's just so many, you know, barriers to the final. In the end, we would save money by regionalizing, but not in the way that you would think. We'd still probably have the four schools, because if we regionalize, that, that probably would be a contingency, that each town would have a school at least for ten years. There's no guarantee that we can sustain the level that we have now in each and every school for ten years. I can't speak for the towns and say, yes, you know, but that would be a big burden to get across, and then, because we'd still probably have the same amount of teachers, probably, you know, the same amount of support staff, however...
You're saying if we regionalize?
Well, if we regionalize and keep the schools, but the problem is, the beauty is, if we regionalize, we can mesh our people together a lot better than we do now. So we can move people from building to building, we can do a lot more, like, right now, we have specialists that are itinerant, but we could also do, you know, more things like that. It would cut down on the amount of work that is being done at central office. Central office is very complex. Patty's done five budgets, she's built five budgets this year, every year, and so many school committee meetings, and so many things that are just repeated over and over again. So regionalization is probably eventually where you'll end up.
So regionalization is probably eventually where you'll end up. I don't know, five years, I, I can't speak to it. I personally, as superintendent here, I would recommend it and I'd love to do it, but the towns, they just have their own identity. We're Yankees, of course, I'm from Chicagobe, so not, not quite as Yankee-ish, more city-ish, but the, the Yankee way of this is our town and this is us and we're, that's pretty inbred. That's pretty, you know, solid here.
A bunch of years ago, bottom town meeting about centralization.
But I mean, if you're a superintendent.
It's a miracle that people get out of the room alive.
If you're, if you're a superintendent.
It's not going to happen.
One school, you know, the, for administration, it's obviously stuff, things like that are better is this one school meeting, you know, instead of five school meetings a, a month and things like that. And however.
It really makes no sense.
However.
There's an economy of scale involved with regionalization.
There's a lot of, just, the, the law requires that all four towns, municipalities are equalized at a health insurance rate. So Conway at seventy-five percent town contribution, twenty-five percent versus Sunderland at fifty-fifty. So the, not just school, but the whole, so, so just that fix is, you know, millions of dollars.
And that would be if we had, that would be if we went with two regions. Because to go, to go to a K to twelve, not only will we have the health insurance, but then we have two different salary schedules, the Frontier salary schedule.
And so we're together, but we're not, because there's Union thirty-eight and Frontier.
So do we do two regions, pre-K to six region and leave the seven alone, seven to twelve alone and just create a new region, pre-K to six? So then we only have the insurance issue that would come up.
And the flip side of that is we would get the transportation reimbursement for elementary schools that we now don't. However, in the past, the state has offered, when they wanted someone to regionalize, they would, they would, the legislature would.
Drive.
Would, would make a one-time payment to equalize, you know, to put you on an equal footing so that you're starting at zero. And we would require, in my humble opinion, we would require such a legislative action because otherwise it makes no financial sense. And, and.
I mean, you can't see, can you see any elementary school in this district who says, I don't want my elementary school?
All four town because of our regional agreement.
They would fight tooth and nail to keep their community school because their community school is the best community school.
Well, it creates a hardship on parents if their kids are going, traveling like an hour or.
Right. Well, this school and Whately are not that far apart.
Right.
You know, I mean, that.
And Sunderland, Whately and Deerfield are all three miles from each other.
I mean, our, our kids in first grade went to.
And when you take a look at it, it makes no sense to have three elementary schools within a couple miles of each other.
When my kid was in first grade, they, they went to Sunderland because what was the roof getting done or is that what happened? Right? So for half the first grade or part of the first grade, we took our kids down to Sunderland School. I thought it was a great experience for them, you know, but most people think it's terrifying to go to school and, and, and that's a gorgeous school. We have gorgeous schools in the district in general. They're beautiful schools, but everybody wants their community school. You know, each town has its own identity.
The school is a huge part of the community.
It is.
And we should fear the tyranny of the majority of Deerfield, Sunderland and Whately gang. And, and all of us should, all the three towns should. I mean, if.
Can I get the.
No, seriously, seriously.
But you're saying that phase one might just be sharing resources?
Yes. There's an economy of scale that would be involved.
Individual destruction is part of education.
I mean, a principal in each school, you know, I mean, nothing against our principal, we want our principal. But, you know, I mean, and other administrators in each school, like, it's just like, that doesn't make logical sense in many ways. But none of us are going to give it up.
The biggest wild card in all this is the liberalization deal, all the school choice and charter schools. I mean, yeah, you might get kids coming in, the more we have a net inflow and outflow from school choice, but then we have to fire more teachers. It's the burden on the town because then these teachers are going to be entitled to health, health insurance and that kind, OPEB, longer terms. So I mean, you know, it's really not a long, it just, it just makes it a lot more, it makes planning a lot more onerous.
Something's going to push it at some point.
We have that same issue at Frontier. But the, the OPEB liability and it there, and of course, our regional agreement is so old, it doesn't address something like OPEB. So there's no way to assess it to the towns because it, they, it's silent in the agreement.
Now, school choice is not supposed to be an extra cost. So for, for next year, when we do school choice openings, we'll look at a grade and we'll see how many kids are in that particular grade. And our school choice openings will be such that we don't have to hire any extra staff. So all, so it's not supposed to be an extra cost to the school. So when you get that money, it's, the, the theory is then it's the extra money. Because you still have to eat the building, you still have to, you know, you still have the phys ed teacher, you still have the fourth grade teacher. And these three kids are not going to cause that to go up. That's the idea behind school choice.
Anything else? Can I get a vote to adjourn?
Motion.
Go, Kayla and Ira.
Second? No, on favor?
Ashley.
I agree.